Okay, sorry. Okay, it's seven oh three. Leading to order. Take roll. Kyle?
Yes.
Kevin? Lee?
Yes.
Craig?
Yep.
And Ginger. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Craig? You have a second? Lee? You take roll. Kyle?
Yes.
Lee?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
And Ginger.
Yes.
Visitors not on the agenda? Do you have anyone? Okay, consent agenda. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Lee? Do I have a second? Kyle? You take roll. Kyle?
Yes.
Lee?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
Ginger?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna move on down to, we're gonna start with item number nine, and then we'll go back up to the top. Resolution to approve waiver of review for platte survey for twenty fourteen dash fourteen, Booth and Bethore. Ginger and Kyle? And we'll take roll. Kyle?
Yes.
Lee?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
And Ginger.
Yes.
Okay. We'll jump down to number ten. We'll do number ten. And then we'll... Resolution to approve waiver of review for platte survey, twenty twenty four dash ten, Joel Zonistiel.
Motion for the resolution for the waiver.
And Craig, you have a second. Take roll. Kyle?
Yes.
Lee?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
And Ginger.
Yes.
Okay. We'll go back up to the top. Motion. Motion to discuss the possible action for allowing honeybees in town.
So I did contact, um, the DNR. And he said, obviously, which we probably kind of knew, that they don't have anything that prevents them. But in his opinion, that if there was anybody that lived close, and it was under the email you guys had, that it would be a concern if there was a bee allergy. And I did talk to, um, was it Niles Wincing that wanted him? And he said that he did have a possible place out in the country, but still wanted us to follow through with what we thought about that. So that was the, that was a concern from, somebody in town asked me about it too, because we kind of discussed it last. And then we kind of, and when we talked about it, was to follow up with the DNR. That was the only thing that they had for or against. They didn't have, it would be up to us to determine that, but it would be if somebody had bee allergy. It could pose a problem.
Probably the other thing with the neighbors or who have to be signed off also, wouldn't it?
I just like the chicken permit thing.
The problem is that bees can travel a lot further than what chickens can.
Yeah.
Well, and you know, if, uh, you know, if a kid with a bee allergy ran through the yard or was lying next door. I don't know. I don't have kids with those, but I know they're pretty deadly. They can be. So it's totally up to you guys.
I'm not in support of having bees in town.
If they got somewhere else to put them, I'd rather see them put them in the country.
I would have to agree with that also.
Because you can't really contain them like you can chickens or...
Yes.
Whatever else. If they want to have them in their home, go for it. Outside of their home, no they.
So... Is that a motion to not allow the bees?
That is my, well, sounds good to me, yes.
Okay. Do I have a second to not allow the bees? Craig? Okay. Kyle?
Yes.
Lee?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
And Ginger.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on down to number two. Motion to discuss the possible action to measure right away on Old Highway sixty-four. Tammy said she talked to Nathan and she just wants us to meet with him and measure the road. We've got the platte with the dimensions. So then the trailers will be off once it gets good.
I talked to both of them and they, they didn't seem to, the only thing is that Nathan did mention was that he wanted, um, to measure all the way down to sixty-four to make sure everybody on both sides was in compliance like he has to be, which is fair.
Yeah.
You know? And so, um, he was, he was, didn't seem to have bother him at all because almost we measured the whole thing on both sides.
Which one? On New sixty-four, the ones in the right way or?
Uh...
Oh, both.
Both, yeah. Yeah, it both has to be measured.
According to Beacon, well, that's what I was looking at on the Beacon, it showed just, uh...
That's an old picture too.
It's, it's an old picture. Does that one...
What does it say? It says address right there.
It says one twenty-five and twenty-four.
Do you have Nathan's address right there?
No. I just usually go to the map and do it.
I'm just getting, I'm getting tired of us picking on them all the time.
This was, wasn't picking. This was just, because if somebody gets in an accident and then the right of way is blocked, then they come up with a sale.
This came from the lawyer, not the...
Yeah, I know.
That's why the lawyer, so, but like I said, it's a real simple thing. All we gotta do is just go measure it quick with him and, and...
I have to go to my house to find anything.
So...
I thought my address was the most popular. I always took mine into it.
Do ya? So this is it here.
Just zoom in. Please.
Why are you going? Getting a saving you want?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, right there.
And I know it's changed a bunch, but you can see in the picture, but there's a, one of the Highline poles. And, and if you go look at them now, there's, there's, I think there's, I think it's gonna affect about three trailers.
Right.
Maybe four.
And that's what, he said there was a couple, and then he said there might be a couple of that, so...
There's, there's one down here. And that, and that's about it.
I thought we left at the last meeting that we're, someone's gonna contact the DOT about that.
She did.
You got that in your book? All those emails are, are in there.
Yep.
And DOT had said that they had contracted with the city of Wyoming, and, um, that we were responsible for the right way even on New sixty-four.
Really?
Yeah, so if you go through your email...
City limits.
I read all that today.
Yeah.
Like I said, it's no big deal. All we gotta do is if somebody would be around, then we're, I can go with somebody else.
I know, if you do it, you...
Okay, we just gotta find a time to meet with Nathan.
This one here is eighty foot. This one is sixty foot, so you're gonna have to measure forty foot from the middle over. It's in the platte, and you have to go by the platte.
Is that from the center of the highway?
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this is an eighty footer, and this is a sixty. So this one will be pretty easy from the crack.
Yeah.
This one, you'll have to measure the street, and then figure out what the center is of the street, because it's been overlaid with...
I got a hundred foot tape.
New, new sixty-four is sixty foot.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, sixty.
This is sixty foot.
An eighty.
This is eighty foot, just like...
Right.
Main Street is going through town is eighty foot. So, I'll see when I see Nathan, and I'll see if he's around and see if we can do it.
That's fine.
So...
I make a motion with the mayor and Mayor Protown, meet with the landowner, and measure the right of way.
Do I have a second? Craig? You take roll. Kyle?
Yeah.
Lee?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
And Ginger.
Yes.
Okay. Motion to request planning and zoning meet to discuss zoning ordinance one sixty-five thirteen accessory buildings. So we talked about this last time.
We have one family in here that has a permit that they are waiting on, because, so they can, um...
Oh, I did skip that one. I'll come back to that one.
Do you wanna do the...
No, we'll just, we'll just get to one of this. I just overlooked it. I'm sorry.
So Randall and Nancy have a permit in, and I did talk to them, and they, they stopped in, and I just talked to them again, I think a couple days ago, and asked about how it was coming with it. And, and it's a, it's a garage right in their driveway. And Rod did sign it, but it is, it's not attached, right? Yeah, not attached. So here's the map. So we're running into, we're, we're sitting on three permits right now that people want to get going on, so we gotta...
What's the holdup?
Because the accessory building is bigger than what is allowed by ordinance.
Yeah.
And it's on the town agenda?
Yes. So, I think we need to just go ahead and do this, because we have already three in town that are bigger. I guess I look at it as, if somebody wants to build something, uh, it's property tax money.
Tax dollars.
It's tax dollars.
Can I say something? In, in ours particularly, it's gonna match the house. It's just a regular garage. It's just been attached. And that, I mean, if that's all it takes, we can attach it.
But, like I said, we have three of them that are already oversized.
Four.
Is there four now? I can think of three.
I like the fact that they're all nice looking and appropriate versus, you know, some...
And they can't build without getting a permit, so you guys could ask questions.
And the neighbors, and then we agreed the neighbor's gonna sign off.
We did not set, we, that was just part of the discussion we had, but...
Damn, they're signing off. What's that?
I'm just an...
So, so one of the things that we need to do is, I guess we need to get planning and zoning together so they can look at this review and make their recommendation.
Like I said, spring's coming up fast.
Yes.
Can we approve this one though, so they can, can we do that so they can get moving on it?
I don't think we can until we have their recommendation.
Gotta prove that it's all three in one. What, we got three of them?
We got three of them, and it's like contractors are wait, they need to know what to order, how to, you know, what we're gonna do with them.
I mean, we've let the, the other ones are already built.
You signed off on those, council member did.
I mean...
So why do we have to go through this next step if we didn't do with the other ones?
We need to get the ordinance fixed.
Yeah. Yeah. Because you have to, I think eventually draw the line somewhere.
Yeah, there's some in residence.
I'd like to get it fixed, I mean...
If you guys wanna, if you wanna, if you wanna sign those off, you can. But, on the flip side, we need to continue through, and we need to, I mean, legal.
But we can, I make a motion, we just sign off on this right now, and we continue getting the ordinance changed.
So that means you're gonna approve the rating of the planning and zoning to get their recommendation? Is that...
I don't, do you really think we need them? I mean, we got, already got...
Yeah, we do. We have that planning and zoning to do it too.
To change the ordinance.
To change the ordinance.
When do they meet?
Whenever we call them.
That's what this is for. You guys were supposed to look at the ordinance and then kind of talk about what you wanted to do, or decide in your minds what you wanted to do, and then let me know that you wanna... Because we started this in December with looking at this.
I would agree to sign off on these and then continue with the planning and zoning.
I'd like to see planning and zoning worked, work on this ahead of time, like within the next two weeks, have their meeting, and they make a decision, and then we approve those three.
We have to have it, can we have them sign off at all, wouldn't, you can do all three at once, right?
I can sign them.
No, no, no. I mean, the, when we do, after we do it, to do an ordinance, you have to sign, you have to have three.
Three readings, but you can waive the first, and the second.
Okay.
You can waive the first and second and have the third.
How are you guys sitting with this? I mean, when do you have to, are you, what's your timeline?
We had contractor come yesterday, because we've looked for contractors, booked up till September already.
That's what the, a couple of the other ones have said too.
You know, we put in permit, I think, about a month ago.
Yeah, you did.
And that, not knowing that it would be a month or two months, and guys are saying, we gotta...
They gotta do something.
Yesterday, they come to concrete up one... Is there any reason why we can't approve this? Would these be considered grandfathered in? Because we let the other ones go with the planning and zoning.
You sure can.
This is right in their garage, right in their driveway. It's not like in a, it's not a side building, you know, that's built in another lot, that's gonna, this is, it, that's in their driveway, you know?
And is there any legal repercussions if we approved it?
I don't think so. Unless, the only thing might be if somebody complains.
Well, and on the other side too, um, correct me if I'm wrong, there's, it's the ditch, right? There's nobody living next door to them, and I own the house right across from them.
Yeah. And I talked to all the neighbors.
And so it's not, for this one at least, and I don't know about the rest of them, but this one, the location of it, it doesn't seem to affect any neighbors, you know? But it's totally up to you guys.
This is gonna be a regular garage, not a, big enough to...
Same siding that's on the house, it's gonna match the house. It's gonna have a hip roof, just like the house is gonna have a hip roof. It sets right in the driveway.
Thirty by twenty-six, how, how tall's your side walls?
Uh, it's gonna be ten foot. It's gonna be lower than we got two stories out. Yeah.
Okay.
So that's not one of the monsters like...
No, it's not a monster like, like the other thre, the others.
Yeah, I've seen some, everything.
Yeah. Yeah. This is gonna be like a regular garage.
Yeah.
And you don't have a garage, oh, you do have one that's back for the, right? Yeah.
Yeah, for a bottle of tea.
Yeah, a, a little one, yeah.
I don't have a problem looking at approving that particular one tonight, since it's not outside of the dimensions that were...
That's what I was going with.
Okay.
That's fine.
And we can still let them do the, get them, well...
You still get planning and zoning needs to just continue forward in, in my opinion.
Trying to get that done before the next meeting, so we can...
If you can.
One, if you can sign that, if that's what you're comfortable with, I'll make them a copy so they can get, get going if they want to, and they can get started with their contractor.
So I have a motion to request planning and zoning to meet and discuss the ordinance. Kyle? Lee? You'll take roll. Kyle?
Yeah.
Lee?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yes.
Ginger? Okay. Let Tammy get that finished. Just waiting for Tammy to get to, someone to talk to.
So that's what we need to bring up tomorrow for your...
All right, we'll back up since I missed one. Motion, and motion to discuss possible action to approve employee hours and lunch breaks.
I brought up hours last week, or last meeting, is that, but I didn't bring up lunch breaks, is it two separate things?
It was kind of a conversation.
Yes, for that conversation. On if you want, um...
Not required. You don't have to have a lunch break.
I don't know who, which one, somebody brought it up, on if we should.
I thought you said last meeting was a federal mandate to have.
Apparently it is, it's union.
No.
It's not.
Okay.
Not in there, it doesn't have to.
We're not required to have to take one.
So...
And it's not in our, um, but the thing is, is that you can't, and then there's a, a thing from, Steve wanted me to follow up with the lawyer to make sure that we were, you guys were on, you know, everything was all legit on there. And he had said that, um...
He tried to in the front, that's what you were looking for.
I know, you've seen that.
His, his comments back are the highlighted ones, and he had said that, like, the council could determine that we, you know, say, you want us to take an hour lunch every day, um, we could work, um, from, to get our hours in, just work an hour later. You know, if that's what we, if, if you want, if you guys wanted to mandate that, it's totally whatever you wanted to do. But right now, nobody's done anything wrong by taking lunch or not taking lunch. And I know Rochelle and I, I always clock out, because I usually go home to let my dogs out and stuff. She generally doesn't take one because she doesn't work the whole day. And sometimes I don't work the whole day, and sometimes I don't take one. We just work, we sit at the desk.
I take one on my long days.
Yeah, just on your long days though.
Yeah.
But if you're only here, you know, four or five hours, okay. So it's whatever you guys want, but it, it's okay to not do it, and it's okay if you do want us to do it. It's your decision.
I don't think we should make the employees take a lunch break. I mean, if they want to come to work and get their job done in a lot of hours, and that's ideal, because...
Like I said, it was just part of the conversation, but we never talked about the phone. If there's nothing else, we can just move on with that one.
I have no problem with it.
Okay. We'll move on down to number five. Motion to approve clerk and Mark Culver as witnesses for nuisance. This is...
Oh, so, I've got those here. Let me show you guys. Prepare to be amazed if you haven't noticed it yet. So this is one of the houses that has went to, these I took myself, so they're not professional quality, but I need these. This is the house that's on Jones Street.
Next one that's going to the trial.
It is, yes. All of these pictures that I'm gonna show you right now, so, let me see what I got on that. And I don't know if you remember what it looked like back there. It was all completely shrubs and rusted, broken down cabinets and garbage and everything else you can think of back there, behind this house. And, um, so it's been cleaned up. The only thing is, on this one, is the one, if you guys remember, is the one that, um, had the fox living in it. The neighbors said there was dead raccoons in it, um...
Does it still have open holes?
Yes.
That we can see?
Um, I think along the base, so when I talked to, emailed Mark Culver on this one, while we really appreciate finally getting something done with this house, this is one that, um, I got a stack of nuisances for years and years and years. It has not been lived in or had water in it since two thousand eight.
That's incredible.
So even though now that he's, the, the owner has been hit with, you're gonna get a fine if you don't get this cleaned up, he cut the trees down that were touching the house, because the house was just enclosed with trees and brush and shrub. He cleaned up the yard, which, fantastic. But if we stop now, in my opinion, what's gonna happen is that house is gonna sit just like it is for another ten years. And it's fallen, it's got a roof on it, but it has no water, not been lived in, and it's, it's in really bad shape. And, and his, this house was cited for the condition of the house too, not just the yard, it was the condition of the house. So what we can do is still pursue it on that, and what the lawyer had asked me to do is pull up all the nuisances, so I have to go through the file and pull out that big thick file and make a copy of all of them from over the years. Because Iowa mandates, one of the laws is that they have to have water to the house. I didn't even know that, you know, and, um, so while it's been cleaned up and not so much, much better, um, and then they have asked that, they wanted, uh, um, Mark and myself both to be, um, the witnesses, so... Or who you guys wanted, they said, actually, it said Steve, Mark, or Tammy. And, um, and he said that he preferred that it be, uh, of Mark and myself, since we're the ones that have dealt with it. Unless you wanna do it, Steve?
No, that's fine. Everyone is speaking on their turn.
So, right now, we are set to go to trial with it. If he, and, but he has stopped in, the owner stopped in a couple times, and he's contacted Mark too. And when the lawyers asked for updated pictures, well, the yard's cleaned up. The nuisances in the yard's cleaned up, but that, the falling down house is still there. So I don't know if when it goes to court that, you know, could he say, hey, I wanna, I'll take the house down, or I'm gonna fix it up, but we're gonna give them a deadline? I don't know. I don't know how that goes from here. What's your guys' thoughts on it?
Looks to be an older house, so I'm sure he doesn't want to take it down because of the asbestos, perhaps.
I don't know.
I think you'd wanna get rid of it if it's not, if it ain't fit to live in, so you're, it taxes on it.
Well, nobody's lived in it since two thousand eight, which means that, you know, and the taxes on it are minimal, that it's taxed on. And there's no, there's no, we don't have a water bill or sewer bill, so it's really kind of, and he lives in, the owner of this lives in McCoka, that doesn't make a difference at all. But it's really, he has, he has returned every single letter we ever sent to him, until the deputy served him the papers at the address we sent everything to, he's never responded to anything in all these years.
Continue on as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I think so too.
Let's finish this process out.
Okay, and then the next one would be, um, is one that did get cleaned up, and, um, really has made a difference on what it looks like. Is it, is this one? So it's this one on Main Street. You guys familiar with this one? Um, and he also stopped in, I took these myself, so you gotta forgive the pictures. And, um, I sent these pictures to, um, Culver, and he was impressed, whoops, he was impressed with what they look like now, what this house looks like. So, um, this one might be, the only thing is, is that there's these two vehicles. Neither one run, and neither one have a, have a license on them.
They're still junk vehicles.
They are, and he, he said he didn't cite them in the letters, so he didn't, he didn't know, so that's a thing I'm gonna follow up with the lawyer on, because they haven't ran, the, the white truck hasn't ran in years. And then the, the other one is not running either. And I had asked the owner of these, um, if they were to be stopped in here, if they were tagged with license, and he said yes. And, um, of course, he had told me he cleaned it all up, and it wasn't cleaned up too. The snow was on it. But he got, he, he got some help from a neighbor and got it all cleaned up. So it looks much better. So this one, besides these two here, there was, are you guys, anybody familiar with this one?
Yeah.
It had a, it's, it, there's no garage behind it, and he, he, he was a junker, is what he said. That's what he told me. Like, he really made a big difference in the cleanup. So this one might not, you know, go to trial, because it, um, Mark is gonna come and take pictures in a couple weeks, and I'm just waiting for...
And all he's gonna do is move the junk vehicles.
Or, or, he's gonna register them. That's it. If he's gonna keep them, he, that's all he's gotta do is register them. He says they're not junk and they run. Well, if they're not junk and they run, by law, you have to have them registered. And our ordinance says is they have to be, they have to be...
Tags have to be on them.
They have to have the tags on them, because it's...
No applied tires, no rolling windshields, no broken tail hides.
So, right now, that's where we're sitting with this one. So that's the second one. And then a third one, which is on Main Street, I think everybody's really familiar with that one, right next to Rushford's, right by the post office. That one is going as an infraction here in the next few days. So, um, and you, and you guys know which one to talk about there. Okay.
So a motion to approve the clerk and Mark Culver as witnesses. Craig? You have a second?
I'll make a second.
Ginger? You take roll. Kyle?
Yes.
Lee? Yes.
Craig?
Yep.
And Ginger?
Yes.
Number six. Motion to discuss resident garbage containers, including location and storage.
So I have, I haven't given them all to you, but I, Ginger brought me these yesterday. And these are just, um, from Onslow.
Yep, just one city, so...
These are from Onslow, and they give you kind of an idea of what Onslow does with their... So you guys didn't have them in your packets, because I just got them. And we're just kind of, this is just the discussion phase of it, because if we're gonna do an ordinance, it's the same thing, special... You know, we gotta do all that. And I think the biggest thing on here, Ginger, where was it, that it was the, is just to pull the garbage cans and put them away at, after so many hours?
That, and also, people set their garbage out on Monday, and it's not picked up till Thursday. So I believe there was like a twelve hour or twenty more hour period in there.
I think, I think before and after, there was a, there was an amount of time before and after on it, when I read through it. I think, I think before and after, there was, there was an amount of time before and after on it, when I read through it. And so it was just one of the thoughts that she had had, and that was just to prevent them from blowing around in the street and, and it looks a mess too.
All the winter time with the snowplow and stuff.
So, yeah, we had a lot of complaints from Kuzners on not being able to get to some of the garbage cans, because people parked next to them or they left them out and got buried in the snow and, or stuff like that.
Just needed to drive by them.
They, I think they had to. And then I got the phone calls on those ones.
It's on page two sixty-three, paragraph three.
I know there's no, nothing in there that says they have to be returned next to your house or whatever within so many hours.
It just says promptly.
Yeah. And promptly to some people with a week.
We discussed this quite a while back too. We shot it down, didn't we?
We just didn't do anything with it.
I know we didn't, but I didn't.
I think the.
Twelve hours is what it was.
I don't remember the whole thing, but I think you guys had said that you were concerned with the people who couldn't, because I told Ginger that, who couldn't pull them in or out, or get them out back up to their house or something. I don't remember.
How do they get them out there then?
I know, I don't know.
Yeah. Well, I'm not opposed to putting a, you know, no more than twelve hour in advance or, or twelve hours after.
We're not gonna really be the garbage can police, you know, if it's a third person, we have to help them.
Can I have a badge? Cause I will be.
Well.
Okay. The sanitation instructor.
I'm, you can have that badge next time you come in.
Okay. And a bulletproof vest too.
Mm-hmm.
You need it. So a week ago on Monday, I was coming home from work and I encountered two residents that had their cans still sitting out. Thursday pickup, Monday comes around, their cans are still on the street in the travel portion of the highway. I made a point to stop, move their cans back onto their property. So, and then I thought, I just can't pick on one street. So I toured the whole east end of town, and there was no other offenders. So I was very pleased, but there was just two properties that had cans out, at least on the east side of town. I did not go to the west side of town.
I know, Kevin, I said the same thing, you know, deliver the mail, doesn't have much left out. I, I don't have a problem with adding this, if you guys wanna do this.
And just put it in our newsletter or?
Well, we, we need to pass the ordinance first, add it to the ordinances, figure out where it would go.
I can put something together for you guys and then have it for you next week.
It's a pretty simple deal, really. I said paragraph three is about all you need. I mean, pretty much sums it up right there.
So then you're gonna put, what are you gonna put for after?
Twelve before or twelve after?
Right. No, that's fine.
I think we're okay with twenty-four and twenty-four, but god, you know.
A day if, yeah.
I would too, because if somebody's leaving or.
Somebody's leaving town or, yeah.
And if there's an elderly person that needs help, I will be more than happy to help them, but I will not help a lazy person.
We'll just figure out where that would fit in our ordinance.
Twenty-four hours before, twenty-four hours after.
Gotcha. Twenty-four hours before, twenty-four hours.
Yeah, somebody is gonna leave a day ahead of time.
Figure, figure out where that would go and, and you'll have to double check the obvious nearby the attorney.
Yeah, okay.
So, basically about all we need to do for now.
Okay.
What's that involve sending a letter? Is that how we do?
Yeah, basically, she'll just figure out where to put this in the ordinance, and then she can say, this is where we wanna add it and have it.
How about put it in the newsletter and on the TV or whatever?
Yeah.
Once it's done, yeah.
Once it's done. But I mean, ahead of time and say, if you don't wanna do your, do this, this is where we're gonna pass an ordinance.
Are you gonna pass it anyway?
I think we're gonna pass it anyway, you know? So once it's passed, put it in the water bill and put it on the website and be done.
Well, the judge is opposed to it and it's up to city people to pay attention to what's going on in their studies, so if they don't, if they don't show up.
Well, let's just move on.
Okay, so was that one motion?
No, we just give you guidance to do it.
Okay.
I don't, cause it's not.
Okay, that's fine.
All right. Number seven, resolution approving the setting of the public hearing for the max levy fiscal year twenty twenty-four on April ninth, twenty twenty-four.
So this is the one that they are now enforcing for this year, that this public hearing has to be its own meeting, so it's going to be um, at six thirty, the special, we have to have a special meeting before the regular meeting. So I'm proposing that we do the property tax rate meeting at six thirty P M on April ninth, and then that, that hearing has to be the only item on the agenda. And um, we have to have the public hearing open, they recommended for at least ten minutes, just for, to give everybody a chance in case they are for or against. And then we will adjourn that meeting, take about a, well, we'll just start, we'll just have our regular seven o'clock meeting.
Well, we can go right to the other special meeting then for Tim's step right afterwards.
Yeah. So then um.
No, let's march, let's at twelve.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, you're right.
So um, we can either set the regular meeting time to be like six forty-five, or we could keep it at seven and just have a recess.
Well, no, we can't have a recess. We'll have to adjourn.
You have to adjourn and then.
We take a break and then come back at seven o'clock.
Again.
I like six forty-five.
Six forty-five, we'll have a regular meeting.
Well, then why don't you just set the, the special meeting for six forty-five?
And keep our seven o'clock on?
Yeah.
No, I can, I can do that.
Set that for six forty-five. We'll have that meeting. It'll be open for the ten minutes, because all we gotta do is take roll. Open the public hearing. Is there any public comment? Have it open for ten minutes. And then we can close it, and then we'll take a fi, basically a five minute break.
And start our meeting.
And then we can start our regular conference.
And then I believe at that meeting as well, I'm gonna be setting this up to adopt, to do the budget adoption, but we'll get ahead of that. I don't wanna get too far ahead.
Do I have a motion to set it for the ninth at six forty-five? Craig, you have a second?
I'll second that.
Ginger? We'll take roll. Kyle?
Yes.
Lee?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
Ginger?
Yes.
Resolution to approve setting public hearing for March twelfth, twenty twenty-four for the sale of a vacated alley to Tim's step.
That's on North Washington. And the other side of the alley was already sold, so there's not really, you know.
Nothing there.
Nothing there, yeah, for anybody to.
Make a motion on that then?
Yes, because we have to have the public hearing, so. Craig, you have a second? Kyle? We'll take roll. Kyle?
Yes.
Lee?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
Ginger? Okay, um, down to number eleven. Public purse report, Rob?
I don't have anything in there. About the only thing is, uh, the hydraulic pump went out of the tractor a few weeks ago. Took it over to Bear Creek, had them fix it. It seems to always be the better rate and everything. Uh, while I was over there, I had to look at the front end, because the one tire's wearing real fast. There's some more parts on that, so I just had them fix that while I was there. Cause the one tire's probably about half a tread, the other one's all upshot already.
Well, we've been having that for a long time.
Yeah, and it, it got fixed a while back, and it was good for about a year and a half, and then some more parts mostly wore.
Gosh, it seems like, no, I think it's been longer than that.
It, it could have been.
Three or four years ago.
It could be time kinda flying by.
Yeah.
But, yeah, and it just seemed to really start wearing here in the last six months.
I asked somebody about that once, about why that one, and they told me that that way that tractor, the system's set up, that that's the tire that, when the, when the rear ones, that's the tire that assists.
Yeah, the first one.
Have we ever looked into a leasing one, just out of curiosity, like to friends and somebody local, just per year? Now we would cut down the maintenance, I mean.
I don't think we have.
What is our maintenance expense on that tractor?
I mean, sooner or later, we're gonna have to buy it.
You're right, you're right.
It has eleven, I looked, because I just signed the bill, and it said on there, it has eleven thousand, seven hundred and eight hours.
I mean, I'd like to check just out of curiosity, what it would cost to lease one for two years or a year, and just keep rolling. It might be money ahead.
I don't know, Mike has nothing. I don't think he.
Yeah, I would think he would, that, that new, um, what is it, selling?
Mahindals?
No.
T Y M.
They're not selling.
T M C or whatever?
Yeah, T Y M.
T Y M.
T Y M.
What's the horsepower on this one?
This is what, ninety-five?
I have no idea. I'm a horsepower person.
What number?
Do you have that, Bill?
It's a J X ten eighty U.
It's a what?
J X ten eighty.
Still, it's under.
So, uh, yeah, it's either a hundred or eighty horse tractor.
It's just, it's just a good utility tractor as well.
Well, let's look.
I'd like to check the, just to see what it would, you know, leasing one for a year.
That seems logical. What are we out?
Checking doesn't, checking, checking it doesn't cost.
Everything's gonna be a hundred percent warranty doing it that way.
Yeah.
But you're right, at some point, we will have to do something.
Probably what we get, you know, cause that tractor's getting.
It's, it's over ten years old.
Right.
But it's not like it's hard hours on it though, cause it's not like to do a field with a tractor.
Hours and hours.
Well.
So I work so much.
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven horses off?
Sixty-seven horse. A J X eighty U is sixty-seven horse.
So basically, I mean, that's enough horse for anything you guys need for it, then, right, obviously?
Oh, yeah.
I'll check into that, just out of curiosity, just to see what.
I can do it too. I see Mike all the time.
I was gonna talk to Chuck.
Oh.
He's the one selling them and.
Okay, that's fine.
So they put a hydraulic pump, a ball joint, uh, a couple of pins and a track rod. That's what. Let's see, uh, found and replaced failed hydraulic pump, replaced bad tire assembly, replaced worn out bushings and pin in ram ends of both steering cylinders. This should help with the tire wear.
How much was it, Steve?
Uh, twenty forty-six.
Pretty cheap.
Ten.
Thank you.
Would've been a lot worse if we'd went to.
Yeah, exactly.
Three times as much.
Yeah.
And I don't know, uh, it had broken down during one of the snowstorms too, a pin busted. So for that, I had to call Sherman's. I don't know what the bill on that was. I don't, I never seen it.
I don't remember seeing that one yet.
Probably not, except.
Luckily, we were, it happened as it was, we just backed it out, so we were able to push it back in, then we were able to come and fix it right away, but. But other than that, I don't really have anything. It's kinda slow right now. Don't really drive that one.
I mean, what could, what would be, what would be reasonable if a guy could lease one for a year?
I have no idea what a lease would be on a tractor.
I mean, I'm just saying, what would it, I don't know what we spend on the, I mean, what we bought that tractor for.
Do you know what year it is?
I have no idea. Like I said, I know it's over ten years old, so. Probably fifteen.
We've, we've got it a pretty good deal, if I remember right. I think that tractor was bought right before I got on it. I got it in two thousand and eight.
The early years of that tractor though, alls it did is drive around and drive around and drive around. So it had no, no pump issues, no nothing, because it didn't use it, it was a throw. You know, so mechanically.
It should be good yet.
Yeah, mechanically, it should be fairly sound. It just made a lot of road miles the first few years the tractor was in existence.
Twenty-four hundred dollars, pretty cheap for someone to do it.
Yeah, that's exactly right. But again, I concur with you that eventually something's gonna have to give, and so.
So it's a two thousand and two or a two thousand and three? That is the age of that tractor?
Twenty years old, dude.
Yeah. Well, actually, twenty-one or twenty-two.
Right.
Yeah. Twenty-one or twenty-two years.
But it's, that's, well, that ain't, we ain't spent a lot of money on it, but.
No.
The biggest thing was when we rebuilt the front end, like I said, I think that's been about four years ago or five years ago.
We, we talked about it one time quite a while ago too, about the tractor.
And what did you say, the hours?
Eleven thousand, seven hundred and eight. Just the only reason I knew that is because Russell notated that on the bill.
Well, just so we know that.
But in all fairness, Kyle, most, no, all of the trackers on our farm are way older than that. And do a lot more work, yeah.
God, they're nothing for, I mean.
Yeah.
I asked, I think I asked, like, I don't know, John Bosick or somebody once about it, and they said, for what that tractor is, he said it'll last you forever. He said it should last forever, for what we do with it. He said it's not like, but the pump, stuff like that's gonna break.
It's gonna break. Yeah, but when nickel and diamonds start costing you more than what the value of the outfit is.
The, the biggest concern that I have with it is it, it idles a lot more and it doesn't get warped.
Yeah.
You know, because that's the hardest thing on a decent motor.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, is, is if it's just idling around instead of actually being warped. You know, cause it's not like we have a, a big old disc we can hook it onto.
Did we have Russell one of the times ever do compression checks and all that stuff on to see how sound everything is? I thought we had him analyze that one.
They, they did an oil sample once, back at that time when we talked about it.
And it come back okay or whatever?
I think it did, but I wanna say it had eight thousand hours on it or maybe nine thousand hours on. That's been a while ago, when we did that. Cause I think I was sitting over here.
Well, I know, I was on the council.
No, 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 I'm just saying, I was sitting over here and not in this chair.
Oh.
And that's in four or five years now, four years I've been sitting. I was the mayor, so.
Gosh, longer than that. Time flies.
Time flies, it does. Anyway, anything else, Rob?
Like I said, everything else is not pretty good, no issues with any things.
Alrighty, there was a sheriff's report in there. City clerk?
Here are the latest.
Is that not what we have in our book?
Did you guys have them? Okay. I couldn't remember, I didn't know if I could do it or not. Okay, so then these are, this is a letter we got from Wyoming Mutual Telephone Company. We've been writing letters to support them getting grants. And they said that the letters um ended up being allowing, the fire department had a thousand dollar grant. Um, then when baseball received a three hundred dollar grant, and the library received a five hundred dollar grant. So I've been writing grant letters. Steve's been signing them, and with that said, we got another letter for you to sign, the ambulance. And here's the thank yous for the grant letters that we provided. So we'll send that in for the ambulance. And then, go ahead. So I, I don't know if I put this in your packets or not, um, and it was just a heads up that we, that Leilos did have sort of an underage that busted. Okay, was that in the packet?
I don't, I didn't see that.
I didn't see that.
So they had to pay a fine and, and it was nothing, we get notified because of their license, you know? So it's just, I'm just letting you guys know that they had one. They did pay the five hundred dollar fine and they're still able to stay open, because it's their first offense. So there was that. We had a council member, I wanna thank Craig, for coming to our rescue with, um, we had a a resident who um wanted to leave her water on when it's gonna get shut off, and they have the right to request a hearing. It's in there, you know, as part of the process. So I was able to get ahold of Craig, talk to him, told him the, and he come up here and used the city phone, the city cellphone to call her, and they did a phone um conversation. He did allow her to leave the water on for what, three days, two or three days?
Well, yeah, that was on a Tuesday maybe or something.
She was gonna have the money by Friday.
Did they pay?
But they were, it was one of, I wasn't here for the conversation, but Rochelle said that he, he let her, because, because we, when, if you guys get hit with one of these, we also prepared it so that Craig was aware of how many times in a twelve month period her water had been shut off. It was twelve times.
Or a bit of payments late or whatever.
Twelve times her water would have been, so on every single month, it was a different excuse every single month. So he gave her the, the two or three days, but firmly told her it had to be done by Friday. So we were able to do that. But, so just so you guys are aware, that's one of the things that's, that somebody, that uh, somebody can request, but now that she's done it once, you, she can request it every single month, so be prepared. And um, doesn't mean you have to grant the leaving it on. Totally up to you guys.
So this person has had their water shut off every month, or shut off, just.
Water, saying it's gonna be shut off.
Well, or posted on the door, and then calling us every single, this one is one, we have a couple, and every month they get the, they get it posted on the door, and then it either gets shut off, or they're coming in saying, hey, here's my excuse for this month. And I understand, people have hard times, but this is, we have people with every single month, yeah, every single month. It's due at the same time, every single month and every single month.
And I can tell you the story she gave me, but I, it's no big deal.
Yeah, it's not. But, but anyway, he did, I just wanted to bring it up because it is something that any of you guys could do. And when, if you do get one of these, you know, we request you guys to do a hearing, I prefer that you come up and use our city cellphone, so that they don't have your personal number. That's why we had Craig come in, use the city cellphone, and then um you know, had a hearing with her, is what it was. And they told us what he got.
And when I said to her, I said, can I give you till Friday? I looked at Rochelle and she nodded her head, that's okay with her. And I said, well, I don't think anybody in the council have a problem with it, so.
See, we can't, we can't do that. That's according to, you know, that's just something, we give them a little bit of leeway. Sometimes I give them a couple hours and not shut it off at one o'clock if they're gonna tell me they're gonna, I've waited for people to come in past what I'm supposed to work. Just because it's a once in a while thing, but.
I just didn't, I told her, I said, I just assume you, if we give you that extra time, so you can get it paid, so you don't have to pay the fifty dollars to get it back.
So that's the thing too, is we did not charge her, because we posted on the door. Well, if we turn it off, it's twenty-five dollars to turn off, twenty-five dollars to turn on, so there's another fifty dollars. So every single month, when somebody gets their water turned off, it adds seventy dollars to their bill. Seventy dollars. So we try to, you know, you wanna avoid that, but just having the posting put on is twenty dollars. Then it's another fifty dollars if it gets turned off.
Do we have any kind of, the reason I'm bringing this up, because I've been flat broke before and had trouble paying those bills.
Yes, we do, and it's not from the city, so what it is. Yes, we do, and it's not from the city, so what it is, Lee, is, um, the, the council of churches, about every single one of these that have come in, have taken great advantage of that.
Oh.
Yeah.
Did, I don't remember Rochelle, did I tell her that day on the phone, I said, this has been going on for, for a year?
And this person did too.
I said, do you realize that every, the late payments you're paying on the water bill in a year's time would have pretty much made a whole month's water bill?
Or, and then some.
They don't mind because it's not their money paying the late bills.
And I told her that too, I says, your cellphone works, don't you gotta pay that?
And also, Lee, just so you know.
And your, and your, your, your electricity?
There, there is the.
And your cable TV?
There was a fund through the county that isn't there, Rochelle?
We still have HACAB.
Mm-hmm, and HACAB, well.
HACAB, um, still, they can still call HACAB.
Yeah, I would just curious, sometimes people just abuse it and.
Yeah, and that's what's happened with a lot of these, they can't even get it anymore, because it's, you know, eventually you have to get a job and pay your bills.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
And some, and some of, and I hate saying that, but, but some of the, they've been given every resource we know of, we do let them know that, and they're like, well, I already used that last month. So then.
Yeah, didn't you guys used to always give ten days?
We do, we still do.
You have ten days, so when it's due on the tenth, you actually got to the twentieth.
And we don't turn it off until.
We, so.
But it's still gonna check you how much?
You, typically residents have their bills in hand by the first, and on the bill, we put, we, we would like to see them paid by the tenth, but we do not process penalties until the fourteenth, and by law, we have to give residents twelve days by the, by the, um, time I process the penalties, till their posting shut off.
Mm-hmm, because it used to say always on the billing date.
It still says it, yeah, it, it still says it.
Mine, I get that, that says it's due the tenth, and that's it.
Yep.
There's nothing underneath of it.
On the website, we have, um, that bills, bills, um, penalties will be processed on the fourteenth, and then, um, shut-off notices will go out twelve days after that, it's usually the twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth, if it falls on the weekend, we actually give residents fourteen days.
After, after they're verified.
Because like, like now, I, I, I paid mine.
Yep.
I paid it right on the tenth.
Yep, and we don't, so, so it won't reflect, the penalty won't actually reflect and actually get added till the fourteenth.
Right.
But we put on there that we want them done by the tenth to give plenty of time.
Sure.
Before people get their money put on.
But when I, when I was getting that, usually, usually you used to have, last year, you guys have, it's due the tenth, and you had so many, well, when Sheri's doing this, you'd have like the fifteenth to the twentieth, now there's nothing, it's blank, I mean, people ask me about that, why is that, and I go, I don't know, go down there and find out.
I don't know why it was taken off, I don't know that, I think the law, there was a law change, remember that we had to extend the days amount, and maybe Sheri took it off and didn't get put back on?
I don't think it, I don't think anything changed.
On the bill.
I don't, I don't think you have to put anything on it, no, they just do.
Nothing changed, and it, the only thing that it says on there is this, it will not ref, it will not reflect.
Usually after.
The twenty-fifth, because.
After ten days, then they'd say they charged so much to do it, you know, before they shut it off or whatever.
If they'd be worried about paying their bills, they're worried about all the extra stuff, they wouldn't have to be concerned, just pay by the tenth.
It's due on the tenth, so.
And we give, the, the shut-off.
And I told that lady, I says, your cell, your, your phone works, and your cable TV probably works.
The shut-off notices that we post on the door, we do as a courtesy, we don't legally have to post those, because we send out the, we send, in the slip that we send when we calculate the penalties, it says on there, you're sub, you can, you can request a hearing, and you have till the twenty-fifth to, to be shut off. So when we do that, it's, we're doing it as a courtesy, so we're giving people three chances to pay.
You know, I think that's.
It gets from. And it hasn't been changed since forever, I can't show you this, 'cause it's somebody's bill, but it, it says on here, on,
so it says payments made on or before, on the twenty-fifth or after, may be reflected on the bill.
May not.
May not be, but it also says on or before, it's got an amount, um, two-ten of twenty-four, and then after two-ten or twenty-four, it's got the penalty amount.
The reason that saying that on the twenty-fifth.
And then it tells you what everything else.
Is where people get confused, because we do meter readings typically on the twenty-fifth, and if somebody hasn't paid their bill by the twenty-fifth, and I do billing on the twenty-sixth, it'll have two months' bills on it, you know what I'm saying? So then people get confused, and they're like, why do I have, you know, a three or four dollar bill, and I have to explain that it, on that, on the bill, it says it won't reflect till after the twenty-fifth, so there's.
It's covered.
You know?
I'm curious, Tammy, now we're talking about all this building stuff, is it, how many people get their bill, going off your web?
Through our front desk, if there's, um, if they're signed up through our front desk, they get a, they get a, um, email bill as soon as I send them out. So you can, you can access your bill online.
No, I'm just asking, out of curiosity, how many people are getting it?
Do it?
Yeah.
Um, I think I'm up, I think front desk one is like fifty or sixty.
Yeah, it's, it's going up constantly, we were trying to get them, because it's paperless, and it saves us a lot of money, um, so we're trying to get more and more people to do it, and, you know, you can pay your bill by just pushing the link online, like we have right here, or you can set it up on front desk, it's an auto, auto pay, you never have to worry about it.
Have we ever considered, like, our USL bill, for instance, they gives us, gives us a discount for paperless, you know? Have we ever considered doing something to try to entice people to do that?
Yeah, we've never talked about it.
No, I mean, it's a, it's a good idea, I know others, some other towns will knock off, um, even fifty cents or, you know, a dollar, because.
Yeah, anything, is it?
Because it saves us the postage and then the work of stuffing, but it has to be completely paperless, so you can mark on front desk, like I, um, I get mine, but you, so I pay, mine's paid automatically online, but you have to specifically say, I wanna go paperless, which I did, because I can look at it, a lot of people don't like to do that, they'll pay it online, but they still wanna get it in the mail. So it doesn't save us anything.
No, that's right, but I think that'd be something to be interesting to look at, if we wanna try to cut down on our postage, why not give them, we'll save an envelope, and save a stamp, and do something.
Ask Rochelle what we just spent on postage.
I just, I just ordered, um, window envelopes, and it was close to twenty-five hundred bucks.
Well, that is all, is that all water bills?
That's for the water bills, yes.
And that's not counting the, the, we have to pay for the forms, we order those.
Maybe we can knock the water bill cost down by having it go paperless. There we go.
I don't know about that. I don't know if they make it a bunch of a difference.
Let's pass that one.
Anything else, Sam?
I did not, I do have one, um, so we have this emergency management, um, a hazmat refresher class, that's gonna be at the fire department on April second at six thirty. Um, who goes to that?
Just the fireman?
So that doesn't have to be in the, in the city, 'cause we, they have a, so I just wanted to make sure I didn't have to do that, then the other one I had was, um, this one I did sign up for, for Ron, for what, I think, uh, water and wastewater sector threat briefing, but it's a Zoom call while he's here, and he might have to do one hour of overtime. Um, they, but then we finished it, so I don't know if you guys are aware, um, Jones County ended up being in disaster area, presidential, president declared a disaster area for the snow, and, I don't know, did I tell you that at the last meeting, so we had to do this big form, fill all this paperwork out, which I'm, I'm not sure, I hope I did everything right, and then send it in, and estimate what we thought it was gonna cost us, what it, and what I submitted as, as cost for us was two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents, as an estimated cost for, um, a forty-eight hour period, so hopefully, if, as a disaster, we'll get that back, but we don't know yet. And I think that's everything I have.
Rochelle?
Okay, so you have your updated annual exam on, on the table, have you got? I did talk to, um, a gentleman at Coleman and Hanson, and I was able to get the Jets', um, contribution for the retail findings removed, and we did talk about the revenue, um, he did change those amounts, so he did, um, lower those to the, the revenues that Sheri ended up figuring, figuring out what the auditor missed, he said, that one will probably just keep on, because I couldn't, um, show the math of how I got that, so if anything, this'll be nice to have next year if it happens again, and it won't happen again. But, um, the long-term debt had to stay on, and then the segregation of duties, which we always have, and then the utility rates will be removed next year, since we enforced, we, we, we no longer have the special rates, so, um, he got it down to four, so that was nice of him, so we got that taken care of. I did get, um, email from Lynch Dallas, letting us know that their fees are increasing their, uh, hourly rate, for Doug will be up to two hundred dollars an hour, and then associate attorney will be a hundred and seventy-five an hour, paralegals and legal assistants will be a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. And then I, um, I've gotten a lot of the notice of conditional, conditional renewals for the EMC insurance coming up in April, and they're all kinda letting us know that they, the increased renewal premium, um, may exceed twenty-five percent raise.
Thank you.
So.
Some are talking thirty percent.
So we're just kind of, uh, mentally preparing the departments and us for that big jump in insurance as well, so.
So what, a thirty percent, and they could already pay almost ninety thousand a year for insurance, so.
Has the city shopped around for other coverage?
No, and.
There's not a whole lot out there, but.
No, that was the thing, is that in talking to other cities, and even in talking to Brian, 'cause he shops around for, for us, and, um, the EMC insurance is like one of the only ones that we can get, that otherwise, when you, if we change, we'd have to go to an insurance where every single thing, like the fire department, would have to go through their, their fire trucks, and everything's insured individually, so it's not like a blanket insurance for the fire truck, so, you know, like a, a jack, a hose, a connector, anything that, everything is separate, you know, you have to have a detailed list of everything.
Every item.
Inventory of everything.
That would make it a mess.
It's a good way inventory, he said that, um, a lot of the times, it, it, it's just, and it ends up costing more, it can end up being a big mess, because if you miss anything, it's not covered. So that was the take we got, 'cause we did talk about that, but it's up to you guys, I can research other insurance companies, but that's what we found.
I think we're just screwed.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I think it's just what's gonna be, it's gonna come for everything.
Got everything.
I just got my home, or my car insurance today, and it went up.
Anything else?
Other than that, um, Sheri and I are just kind of, um, getting ready to punch on the numbers into the DOM website, so that will be all ready to go, that'll be a lot off my plate, and, um, just kinda focusing on the special meetings and getting ready for insurance, so.
Did we ever get ahold of Spear?
Yes, we did, we got ahold of Spear, and they are going to work with me for the utility rates, they have everything that they need, they're gonna send me an itinerary, and then as soon as I have that, I will present it to the council.
Any notes? All right, are you on for our next agenda? Anything? Going once, going twice, no sale, okay, how about motion due here? Kyle, Lee, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Repose, motion carries, thank you.